This conference will now be recorded.
United States of America, to the nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. The, we'll have a roll call first.
All right, Brian Height.
Present.
Diane Kelly.
You're on mute.
You're mute, Diane.
Here.
You're here, okay.
Bill McNair.
Here.
Matthew Mulqueen. No, Matt. Alan Tope.
Here.
David Wilson.
Here.
Five members present, sufficient for a quorum.
Okay. The, the next item is the approval of the minutes Greg sent out the minutes for the December seventeenth and the January twenty first meetings. Did everybody have a chance to review?
Yes.
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 Any comments? Let's do the, the December seventeenth because motion to approve. Second. That was Diane and I didn't get Brian, okay. All in favor, roll call.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, and now the January twenty one, twenty twenty one meeting minutes. Motion to approve.
Right.
Alan and Diane. Roll call vote.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, moving on to agenda item three. Notice there, there is an opening on the planning commission. You can get the, you can either call Tracy at the phone number. I did try the new webpage. I searched for board openings and the forum is there for if the application forum is available online or you can ask Tracy for it. So we are still taking any, anyone with, with interest and we will be putting together interviews in the, over the next few weeks to, to fill that opening. And then the other part of agenda item three is a brief summary update of the comp plan, David.
Yes, so the comprehensive plan, we're getting ready to move into phase four. The survey has been closed, so that kind of wrapped up phase three. Phase four is where volunteer engagement is really critical. We'll be breaking eventually after the kickoff meeting, we'll be breaking into working groups based on comprehensive MPC subject areas. So those working groups will be tasked with making recommendations for the future comprehensive plan. And that we're finalizing the date currently, we're looking at the end of March. But please stay tuned to the blog, which is S W T comp plan with two Ps dot org. With the new website, we may be transitioning things between the blog to the website. So just pay attention to both of those and we will be sure to, we'll probably double post for a while. Once we get that kind of settled. And just a note on the volunteer application. With the new website, we're still working with figuring out where to put the application, so it may move around a little bit, but we will make sure it is visible at all times. Thank you.
Okay, good, thank you, David. All right, moving on to agenda item number four, subdivision review. We have, have two tonight. Guadco LLC major plan twenty twenty one dash one oh one, and it's a request for a sketch plan review. And the second one is Ridge Farm major plan two thousand seventeen one oh one. Request for preliminary plan of view, review. The review will consist of a staff presentation by Greg, a presentation by the applicant, courtesy of the floor and a planning commission action. So Greg, you do the first one, the Guadco LLC staff presentation.
Yes. All right, this is the sketch plan application. This is an application to further develop the property located at forty three, I'm sorry, thirty four oh four Hamilton Boulevard. The plan proposes the incorporation of the zero point three, four, four, four acre lot into thirty three forty Hamilton Boulevard, creating a zero point nine nine three three acre parcel. And its removal from the coordinated development with thirty four thirty eight, thirty four thirty four and thirty four ten Hamilton Boulevard. Also proposes the demolition of the existing building on thirty four oh four Hamilton Boulevard. And the construction of twelve additional parking spaces and a pedestrian bridge connecting the building at thirty three forty Hamilton Boulevard. The subject properties are zoned HC Highway Commercial, Hamilton Professional Center Association and PA Store two nine nine LLC are the owners. Guadco LLC is the applicant. I'll just skip right to the recommendation. The department recommends that the applicant utilize the comments of the reviewing agencies and those of the planning commission to assist in the preparation of the preliminary plan. There are no deadline dates for sketch plans.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. Turn it over to Guadco.
Hey, can you all hear me? Mr. Chairman, thank you, thank you. My name is Chris Brown. I'm registered landscape architect, principal and owner of Brown Design Corp, and I've prepared the submission. That's before you tonight. Want to thank the township and the planning commission for having this second meeting of the month to accommodate the volume of applications that you've been experiencing. We appreciate not being bumped to another month, so thank you for that. On the meeting with me tonight is some members of our team. We have Patricia Gregory, who's the vice president and general counsel. We have Victor Guadringo, who's the chief development officer. And Cindy Feinberg is joining us. She's our, she's our real estate advisor for the company. And I think the staff did a good job of, of, you know, sort of introducing the project. It's a little bit confusing and, and it's one of the reasons why we chose to go with a sketch plan is just sort of make sure we get everything out in the open and, and make sure that we all understand what we're proposing and what you guys are seeing from your end. So it all starts with the fact that there is a four, there is a four lot existing coordinated development. I'm going to refer to them as lots one through four and lot four being the former magistrate building and the smallest of the four lots in the coordinated development. That's the subject of, of this proposal really. And, and two things going, going on with it. One is we're looking to remove this lot from the coordinated development and combine it with the current facilities, which we're calling lot four A on this plan, which is the current Keystone Cana Remedies facility. And so via lot consolidation, the, the properties would be combined. And then through building demolition, we would expand the parking that currently resides on lot four from from the twelve spaces currently to twenty four spaces overall. I think it's important to, to point out, I know there's been some mention during the workshop and, and the staff intro that all of these lots, all five of them are currently non-conforming in one way or another. The lots within the coordinated development all have deficiencies in terms of lot size, lot width and some setback issues. The current Keystone Cana Remedies property suffers from these same, these same non-conformities and deficiencies as well. And it's important because the outcome of this really starts to clean up some of these non-conformities and, and really bring the project as, as a whole into better compliance than where it is today. And, and we took it one step further, just, you know, thinking that maybe the parking might be a little bit of a concern or a sticking point. So we looked at the, the existing parking. And if you take the four lots of the coordinated development, the way they are today, and apply the township's highest use of by right uses that could, that could occur on those properties. The, the coordinated development as a whole is actually deficient, a couple parking spaces. And it's important because that's another sort of benefit and result of this proposal is by removing the building and removing the property from the coordinated development, the three remaining properties within the coordinated development actually now do comply with the parking as well as experience no greater non-conformities or deficiencies than they currently have today. So it actually upgrades the, the, the remaining three lots standing in terms of their, their parking compliance. So and, and then of course, we're, we're looking to connect the properties with a pedestrian bridge. We looked at the, we examined the topography, the relationship between the ground elevation of the existing building pad and parking lot on lot four with the second floor of our existing building next door. And we believe that the, the pedestrian bridge actually makes very good sense. From a topographic and relationship to elevations, we can get an accessible route from, you know, our preliminary studies thus far have suggested that we can get an accessible route from the parking lot to our second floor of the building. And, and that's why we view this as a, as a desirable proposal from, from our standpoint. You know, some of the other added benefits, we believe from this, you know, the outcomes from this project is is really taking away the, you know, the, the burden in this, in this, you know, commercial strip that's sort of hampered by some, you know, changes in design parameters and ordinances throughout the years. But by removing the building and removing the potential for that intensity as it relates to traffic and parking requirements and other demands on, on services and utilities, we're actually lowering the intensity of the potential use throughout this commercial corridor. So we view that as a, as an additional benefit to some of the other things that we talked about. So at the end of the day too, when the, when the new newly formed and consolidated lot is created, it actually takes those two lots who on their own had several deficiencies, that being lot size, lot width and lot area, and gets them almost to complete compliance. We're only two hundred and ninety three square feet short of meeting full compliance once the lots are consolidated. So I think for several reasons, this project is really, you know, kind of a win-win across the board. We met on several occasions and I think I see in the, in the audience, there are some of the, the neighbors, but we did meet on two separate occasions with some of the adjacent neighbors and we discussed our proposal. And we were met with, with some, some good questions and some good comments and, and some input. But we were also able to sort of confirm that there's no, not currently any parking challenges out there. In fact, they all have expressed that they've got, you know, enough parking or more than enough parking than they need. There was some, some discussion about maintaining a communal dumpster area which currently resides between, resides on the boundary line between lots three and four. And so far we've looked at it and we believe that we can accommodate that and are willing to, to try to work, you know, to work that out for the existing arrangement. And we discussed some, some other things like, you know, maintenance sharing, because we will still be using access through the existing parking lots and driveways. And even the possibility of adding some additional signage, just sort of directing our customers to use this parking lot for, for visitation to our facility. So we felt like that, you know, we've got, we've heard the neighbors, we think we can, we can work with some of their minor concerns and comments, so, so we feel pretty good about that. One of the things that we really sort of wanted to, to, to feel out the township on and, and express, I guess, in terms of, you know, concerns or questions, really three. So one is, and, and I, and I apologize, I probably could handle some of this offline, but I'm just kind of curious if anyone else feels the same way that I do, that this, you know, we're sort of, you know, undeveloping as, as opposed to further developing. And I feel like, you know, that this, I just looking through the ordinance, I keep feeling like this falls more into that sort of re-subdivision or minor land development. When I submitted the application, we, we sort of put a question mark as to whether it was a minor or major. I'm not sure how much it really affects the, the amount of effort at the end of the day, but I just sort of question whether or not this, this really elevated to the level of a, of a major land development. And, and the reason I bring that up is because I, you know, the other two triggers here that I think are pretty much our main sticking points are, are concerns as to the feasibility of this project. And that is the sidewalk and curb. We took a look at sidewalk and curb along Hamilton Boulevard all the way across east to west in this, in the township of South Whitehall. And there seems to be only one section of sidewalk on either side of the stretch within the whole, within the whole section of the, of the township. And it's down by the, the medical arts buildings that were built across the street from the Wise Shopping Center Development. And, you know, down there, the, the topography is really nice and flat and very conducive. You know, there wasn't existing utilities, no other burdens. The situation across the frontage of, of our two properties in question and all these properties, quite frankly, is just really sort of burdened by numerous, you know, above ground and below ground utilities, significant topographies and existing driveway configurations, which I think are, are probably even a bigger trigger than the rest of these in terms of being a limiting factor for the construction sidewalk and curb. Not saying that I don't agree that it's a good planning principle, but I think there's a broader, bigger picture here that, that really needs to sort of be explored and you know, and I, and again, I can't help but to think that this project does, since we're sort of de, de-converting or we're, we're decommissioning some of the intensity of usage on these properties that, that this project isn't necessarily the catalyst to trigger, trigger some of these, these larger activities. And, and that rolls into sort of our last concern and that's the, you know, the Penn dot, the Penn dot exposure. Again, we understand it's a state road, we understand it's your purview to, to initiate. We did do our own right to know request and we have, we have discovered that there's no existing highway occupancy permits for the coordinated development. We do have a highway occupancy permit previously filed for the, for the existing facility. It wasn't filed by us, but there is a, there is an H O P on record for that property. And, you know, our biggest concern is the net effect it's going to have on everybody really but us. You know, because the driveway is really not on our property, but we are sort of adjoined to these, you know, three additional properties to the west. And we're really technically sort of joined to the property to the east, that being the Dorneyville Pharmacy, that, you know, we're really kind of opening up a big can of worms by, by doing this. And again, not saying that it's not important, but I think is this the project that's triggering, you know, this sort of domino effect? And if there's any room within the township's, you know, ability to, to waive this, I see it's a S A L D requirement. So I think it, you know, it could be offered to the supervisors or to the commissioners with, you know, with a favorable recommendation that at such time in the future, you know, to potentially waive this requirement and look at it on a bigger picture. And I think, I think most property owners would embrace that, you know, a, a bigger, broader vision that would enable, you know, this frontage along Hamilton Street to get cleaned up. But it's not the kind of thing that can either be designed piecemeal nor really implemented piecemeal. So I think it's an important thing that needs to happen. I'm a resident of the area for a long, long time. My very first job was at Dorney Park, you know, I used to walk to work from the neighborhoods behind this area. So I know it's an important thing that everybody wants to see happen, but it really needs to happen in a much bigger, broader perspective, I think. And just going back really quickly to the comments from the zoning officer and the township engineer, we, the, the parking sizes was a, was a mistake on our part and, and I looked at this prior to the meeting. I believe we can meet the minimum size parking spaces without any trouble. The parking setback is something that we'll need to look at. I mean, I think we can, we probably can, could sacrifice some spaces if needed, or perhaps we, we may try and seek some relief with regard to the parking setback. I'm not sure about the eight thousand square feet, how that really relates when you're sort of adjoined at the hip with additional parking. I think we're hovering right around that eight thousand square foot of parking cutoff. And then I just wanted to mention that I thought some of the comments about the, the pedestrian bridge were very good comments and well taken. I can tell you that Keystone Cana Remedies is required by, by law, but also does quite a bit of voluntary security measures. You know, this pedestrian bridge will be a secure facility as long as there's medical marijuana in this building, whether it's on the first floor or the second floor. I have a feeling that this, this is going to be a very secure operation from the pedestrian bridge all the way through the building. So it was a good point, you know, there, it may be an enclosed, it may end up being an enclosed pedestrian bridge that does have secure, that does have secure doorways on, on either end or something. So point well taken there. I think the rest of the comments, I believe we can, you know, we can take under advisement. And, and I don't think they change our position with this proposal. I think the rest of the comments were good and I appreciate that. So unless anyone from my team wants to add to that, I, you know, we could spend more time talking about the operation. If you have questions about the operation, we have folks here that can answer. But if, if, if no one else from my, from my side has anything to add, I'll, I'll turn it over to you guys. Pat, are you guys, Pat, you good, Victor?
I'm good, thanks, Chris.
I have, I have a few comments. I'll, I'll take a similar stance to a previous decision. At least I made it, I, I don't want to speak for anyone else. We, we had a, a project on Walbert that right next to the Ridge Farms project, they consolidated a lot. Looks like you want to consolidate a lot here. That was Walbert to State Road as well. We typically don't like waivers. So we deferred the sidewalk in that it's since, every project's unique, but the thought processed with that was we don't want to piecemeal it. I, I would see a similar thing here. Now, if it's a deferral, it could come in, in the future when if the other properties need sidewalk as well. So me personally, I'll, I'll just be consistent with the previous ruling or decision, at least I made in supporting a, a deferral and if there's any future construction or it would help for planning, planning purposes to do a more a sidewalk that's not, not piecemeal. So, so that's my personal take on the sidewalk. In terms of the pedestrian bridge, is that a covered pedestrian bridge?
I, I, based on the comments that we heard today, and I think some of the future discussions we would have on the matter, it probably would end up being covered and potentially enclosed or at least secure, potentially secure on both ends, you know, therefore requiring to be covered. We haven't, we haven't really taken the, the architectural design anywhere with it, other than to just sort of verify the feasibility from a topography standpoint and a, and a grade across the, the walkway.
Okay. And I guess a question I have for township staff, do we know if there's been deferrals of sidewalk further down? I guess east of Hamilton, because I know there's a number of commercial buildings. And maybe it's something we look into the future, so it could be well-coordinated sidewalk in the future opposed to someone putting sidewalk and then someone else puts sidewalk later and they're not connecting. That's my concern, I guess.
Well, Dave, if I can, if I can tell the tale of sidewalk along Hamilton Boulevard, there have been a number of land developments along here over the past twenty, thirty years. A, a number of them have been, had deferred improvements along Hamilton. We've, we've got quite the database now of what properties had what deferrals. Some of you on the planning commission may have been around when the McDonald's up at Lincoln and Hamilton was redeveloped. And at, at that point, there was a big push to start the, the sidewalk movement there. And unfortunately, what we ran into was a whole slew of things that, that Mr. Brown here mentioned, topography, utilities and, and everything else. And I think that led to, or at least had a hand in, the Hamilton Boulevard streetscape design, which was, has been done, well, I think that was started four or five years ago. And we, we have a, a good design for this entire corridor that not only includes sidewalk, but a whole slew of other things. So we have looked at this as an overall project and I think you're right, Dave. We tried, we're trying to get away from this piecemeal approach and implement the whole street, treat, streetscape project to do in one go. So everything is coordinated, consistent and done at about the same time. So, you know, from, from a staff point of view, I would see merit in a deferral simply because we do have a project in the wings. It's just a matter of getting the funding for it.
We've also, we also made Wawa put in sidewalk.
That we did.
And that's on the, the westbound, you know, direction of Hamilton. My question to the applicant about sidewalk and stuff is do any of your customers or medical marijuana patients take transit? Because the transit bus stop is in front of Ice Cream World. And I, you know, I know the other facility, your competition in the township over on Tillman Street, I see people getting off that bus, going into that facility. So I'm, I'm wondering how many or do you have any customers or are you even aware of how they, they get to your facility? Because, you know, transit, especially if you're in a condition where you need your services, that may be your only way of mobility. And I know there's shoulders along Hamilton are pretty wide. And I'd rather a person walking on a sidewalk for ten feet rather than on a shoulder. But that's just my opinion, but factoring that we made Wawa do it as well. So I understand the topography. I've been in front of your facility, I haven't been inside to look at this plan. And that was my question is, I, I noticed where the transit bus stop was. So my question to you is, if, if any of your patients or customers use transit.
Brian, where is the transit bus stop?
It's a, it's at, on the east side of the Ice Cream World. So it's probably at Birch Avenue there, it's probably
Yeah.
Just left of there on the screen.
Okay.
Good question. Victor, do you happen to know?
Yes, so public transportation, actually, we do actually scout our locations with that in mind. Our Bethlehem location has a bus stop right outside and it is used quite often. The Hamilton location really hasn't had much traffic from the public transport bus stop there. And I think that's because there is no sidewalk. So that, Dame Columbia Cares is the other dispensary that you that you may have been referring to. They may see increased traffic because it is more easily accessible by the, by that public transit. It's, it was required when we first were applying to be at least in the vicinity of a public transport so, so that we can increase ease of access of medication for patients. Like you, like you referenced, that many of our patients are, you know, in debilitated conditions. But, but, you know, we do see, I can, I do not recall anybody walking on the shoulder to our store, but we do see people walking on the shoulder there from time to time. So it's something that, you know, I think would only help our patient base in that regard. But right now we don't see too much foot traffic from that public stop.
Gotcha. And it would be better if it was coordinated with the whole township streetscape plan and all put in at the same time. So I agree with Commissioner Wilson on that. I think that was on, the only question I had.
Any other comments from the planning commission?
I just had a question about the rear of the complex as far as buffers for the neighbors that live behind.
Yes. Well, I can tell you the way we handled it on the existing facility. You can see where the parking is in proximity to the property line. There was residences right behind our, our current facility. Because of the density of the existing vegetation back there, plus the topography, we had a little field trip. I think Mr. Adams and Laura Harry were out with me and we examined what we felt to be a sufficient sort of substitute for the required buffer. But we have no problem doing that again. And if it's deemed insufficient at this point, we can, we can certainly add to what's, what's back there. But I believe the condition is similar on this lot as it was behind us on the, on the existing lot. So, but adding landscape is something that we would be more than happy to do as, as needed.
Very good. Thank you. And I just wanted to ask one follow-up on the sidewalk issue. If we were to ask for them to be installed when this development is, is moving forward, would there be any harm other than the cost to the developer to go ahead and, and have those put in at this point?
I would say we'd have to check closely to the streetscape plan that we have in place. I'm not quite sure how that would, well, obviously I haven't presented design. So we'd have to see if it complies with that design. And like I said, the streetscape plan had more amenities than just sidewalk and curbing. So we'd have to take a look at that as well. So it would basically be if they presented something and you really wanted to move forward with it, then we'd have to go for consistency with that plan.
Thank you, Greg. And just, if you could help me, I know that plan has been on the books here for five years or so. What's the plan moving forward for it? Time wise, do we have any idea when that will come before us?
The last I understand was it was a funding issue. So they were looking for grants, they were looking for donations such that, you know, it's, it's not an inexpensive plan to implement.
So it's, it's also three municipalities. It's Lower McConge, Upper McConge and South Way Hall. They ran it the whole length to the city of Allentown mine. So when you're talking that big of a project, it's crazy. There's right away issues and utilities and it's a, it's a good plan, but it's, funding is the issue. So.
So potentially.
If I recall, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dan.
I was just gonna say, potentially it could be some time before we see that come together because of the complexities of the multi-municipal issues.
Yes. If I recall, they actually did receive some funding and the focus was put on the two municipalities to the west of us.
Right.
So it, it sounds like it's moving. It's just got to roll into the township at some point.
The, the big, the big hindrance between the two other municipalities and ours is I-78. That's the big, that's the big cutoff. So that's where it's running into problems. There's bike lanes and everything else proposed. And the bike lanes have been put on, on, not the bypass of Hamilton, but the old Hamilton going into Trexler Town. If you notice, there's bike lanes in there and stuff. So there's slowly, but it's, it's, this is the minimalist part of it, but it's part of the whole larger scale of it.
Thank you.
Okay.
I do, I do have a follow-up question concerning the existing parking at the existing building. Now, I hate to bring up your competition again, but I know this when I drive by there, apparently I drive by there more than your facility. They have a parking issue. They end up parking a lot on the grass or they have their employees parking the grass to open up parking spaces for the customers. Are you experiencing that now? And hopefully this would alleviate that problem. And would you have your employees park in the new lot, or would you have them close to the building? It's just a matter of trying to get people with mobility issues, even a bridge with somebody with a medical condition can, that's a long walk for some people. Yeah. So that's my question.
Oh, yeah, sure. I mean, we haven't fleshed out our, our plans completely, but I think we would definitely keep accessible spots near the current building with the ground floor exit and the handicap ramp that we currently have for our more severely debilitated patients. But the, so we don't have the same parking issues that Columbia Care has, not nearly. We've heard some bad stories from there, from patients, from the community. Right now we do have our staff parking stacked cars in the parking lot to alleviate some stress on the parking lot. We haven't run into issues yet, but we do see increased volume, just the growing success of the program. And we just want to have some proactive action in regards so we never get there. And I, I'm not sure why they're seeing that. I think they do have a bit of a higher volume. They've been, they've been in the township for about six months longer than we have. They established business a little earlier. So they may have a little bit more of a dedicated patient base, but we are growing. We, we're, we're seeing a good volume of patients. And like I said, I think this is really just proactive action for the future. So we can avoid things like that.
Yeah, they, they actually do share a use with a salon. So they have some conflicts there. But I, I would like to commend you for being proactive rather than reactive. So that's always good in planning, which was done more. So thank you.
Commissioner Hyde brought up a good point. I know a lot of hospitals, they typically have their employees park farther away and that allows the patients to park closer to the door. So I, I would recommend some sort of protocol to encourage your employees to park farther away. And that would, that would enable the, the patients to park closer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good point.
Question about the, the PennDOT, what are your plans? The highway occupancy permit, typically all of, you know, I don't know if there's variance is allowed for that.
Well, so, so, so Mr. Chairman, the, the requirement in your SADO requires that plans be sent to PennDOT. You know, I merely suggest that, that maybe because it is a SADO requirement, that maybe there is a waiver from it based on the reduction of intensity in this proposal as if, as compared to if we were, you know, expanding the use and creating more intense, you know, activity on the, on the property. You know, it's a, it's a driveway that doesn't even reside on our property. I'm not even sure the logistics of it, how, how we even go about it. But, but my bigger concern is the effect that it's going to have on others. You know, I've heard rumors, I don't know these, these for fact, but I've heard rumors that previous developments were proposed that, that changed the configuration of driveways among the whole coordinated development. And, you know, for one, we don't necessarily feel like this warrants that sort of disruption to other people's businesses. But nor do we think that they're going to welcome the expense associated with it. And nor do we necessarily feel like it's something that, that we should bear either. So it's just kind of a messy situation, to be honest with you. It's, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to volunteer for a whole lot of work. And we don't want to get everybody drug into it with us either. You know what I mean? It's, it's just one of those where I can't, I had, I can't help but to ask, is there an opportunity here for this to move forward? Cause I, I would think the streetscape project alone would trigger all of those things. Mr. Adams, I don't know if, if we, if we came through in a streetscape project here and PennDOT, on a PennDOT road, it's going to trigger every HOP that, that exists one way or another. And I have a feeling all these driveways are going to be impacted at some point or another down the road.
Does the applicant own those properties that are in red?
No.
On the, so you don't even own, okay.
No.
I think that would be my question. I mean, the plan goes to PennDOT. Technically speaking, lots one, two, and three are not involved in this. So would those lots, would the driveways there even be open for anything, any review by PennDOT?
Yeah, it's one of those, it's one of those, you know, until you ask, you don't know. But once you ask, you can't take it back. So it's just, I mean, we've all, we've all been there, you know, on different sides of the table. And, you know, nobody voluntarily wants to open up a mess with, with PennDOT. But I, I just, we can't help but to ask the question here. We've got, we've got legitimate driveways on our existing facility. We've got an operation that seems to be, you know, functioning with the remaining properties and the coordinated development. I understand there might be some, some circulation, things that, that are, that some of the other owners aren't as fond of, you know, with people trying to bypass or whatever. But, you know, it's, it's a much bigger can of worms, I think, that then, than a lot consolidation and a demolition permit should, should be triggering, I think. That's my, is my opinion on it, you know? And that's why, if there's any room for this to go through without, without that, without opening that door is, is our question.
I mean, I, I don't see any problems. I mean, it's removal of a building. It's not, you know, if it was, if a building was proposed, you know, that's a different thing, but it's a pedestrian bridge that's being constructed.
Joe Zader, what do, what do, what do you see?
I'll begin by asking a question. The existing driveway for the building that's going to be demolished, is it the driveway that's shown on this plan shared with Lot Three?
Yeah. So, so by the, so Joe, by the, by the recorded declaration, it doesn't, there is no meets and bounds or description of any one particular driveway. The declaration that governs the four lots says that they can all use each other's driveways and parking. It really, there's no, there's no legal description of any one particular route.
So you're not creating a new driveway in any way? It's just pre-existing?
Correct.
Two thoughts come to mind in response to your question, Bill. One, the MPC provides, the Misspice Planning Code provides a great deal of leeway when it comes to matters that a township may or may not want to waive. They are rather strict when it comes to recording a plan that would require a highway occupancy permit and does not have one. So that language would need to be reviewed into the MPC to make sure that if the planning commission is thinking about recommending what's being suggested by Mr. Brown and the applicant, that we're not running afoul of the MPC. So that's point one we need to look at. And pointing in the other direction, as someone just mentioned a moment ago, this, from the standpoint of Lot Four is really a demolition of a pre-existing facility more than anything. The addition of a few parking places and connecting of this pedestrian bridge. If it were not for the fact that it's going to be tied to the existing building that houses the medical marijuana facility, it's arguable it would not even qualify as land development and require this kind of review. So that needs to be looked at in concert. And that's sort of pointing in the opposite direction of what I just mentioned. So sitting here today, without having thought about these issues before, that's the best I can come up with. But that's one of the reasons we're at the sketch plan stage. So these can be looked at and feedback be provided to staff, planning commission, and the applicant's representatives for consideration.
Okay. One, one other question would, I think my understanding is it, it is a coordinated development now, but it will no longer be once these changes are made?
Yeah. My view is it would be a revised coordinated development. So it would go from a four lot coordinated development to a three lot coordinated development. Lot Four would essentially exit the agreement or the arrangement and be consolidated with the neighbor to the east. So there would still be a three lot coordinated development in, in its place. A more compliant and less non-conforming one at that. But yeah, I think, I think by default, we have to revise the coordinated development. It's one of the outcomes here.
Okay. And, and the existing building, the, your, your building now does have another driveway, looking at it in addition to this one?
Yes. It actually has like two, or one and two thirds.
Okay. All right. So that's, we don't have a definite answer on that. You, you, you got it from Mr. Zader, what, where we are on that right now. Any other questions from the planning commission?
Yeah, I have one. From an engineering point of view, is it possible to get to your new parking lot by using your existing driveways and your existing building? Build, build something, build some kind of access road across and then you kind of get out of all these other issues?
Yeah, right. I, you know, and I wish there was, the, the grade elevation is, is probably better part of 10 to 15 feet. And over the short distance, I think we would, we would lose the majority of our parking that we're hoping to pick up by making that sort of switchback or, or grade transition. So I don't believe it is possible. One of the other things that I didn't point out, but I think was maybe mentioned prior, we still need to provide, there, there's a little bit of overlap onto what will be our newly consolidated lot. We need to provide access easement to the four parking spaces to the east of the existing building, you know, to our west. So we need to maintain a great relationship there that's conducive for those folks as well. So the only thing, the only other thing we could do is if we lowered the whole level of that lot, you know, closer to the level of our lot, but that's, that's where we would, we'd run amiss with the access to their existing spaces. Not to mention, I think, probably hit a lot of rock and some other potential difficulties. So I think we've kind of ruled it out.
Would it be possible to build a roadway from your west driveway south toward the rear property line and then make it jog west and come back in, kind of like a letter J?
I mean, that's, that's an interesting, that's an interesting idea. I can't say that I've, that I've looked at that. But I'm, I'm always up for, for a challenge. I would, you know, got nothing to lose by looking at it on paper. I think the grading is, is, is a bit more significant, you know, considering the, the types of elevations we'd want to try and maintain on that road profile. But certainly worth a look.
Is there any way we could bring up like Google Earth and show the street view? And then that, that would show the, you know, elevation?
I happen to have it, if you guys want to.
Just so we can all, you know, see it.
Yeah. If you don't mind, I mean, I can, I can pull it up in about a minute here.
Chris, did you say you had something?
I, I have a street view up on my browser right now.
I can make you presenter.
Okay. Okay. I went a little too far, sorry about that. Okay, so let me back up the hill here a little bit. Probably better to see it from down below here anyway. So Dorneyville Pharmacy on our left. And there's the existing Keystone Cana. You can see the, the grade relationship for our existing facility. And then up here in the distance is the elevation of the magistrate building. And a tree right here is sort of in our way, but, uh, you see the embankment when you move down the hill just a little bit.
Good.
I think that says that, you know, the whole story right there, that relationship is probably every ten to 12 feet. But it, it does, it does work out nice to our second floor in the stair tower. And the comment that I think the engineer made about, you know, conflict with the stairway, we, we've got the ability to move a, a parking space and, and striped area to sort of avoid the stairway. Cause I think we would keep it for those able bodies that want to use the stairway. But I'm not sure how much grade we would lose if we tried to ramp up around from behind. I really, it may be something worth looking at. We can completely detach from the, you know, from the adjoining properties to, to the west, but we still have an issue with the, with the parking easement, um, that I think might be a problem. But here you can see, you know, you can see some of the utilities that I was referring to. Not only, you know, overhead stuff and, and high power, but we also, I think we've got sanitary sewer running along here. There's numerous signs. And just I'm thinking about the impact to the, to the alignment of these driveways for trying to run curb and sidewalk here. I'm not sure if the sidewalk would have to be, you know, with the Penn Dot right of way. Maybe the sidewalk is, is all the way up here. I'm not sure where it would be, um, where Penn Dot would, would want it to be, I should say. You assume these poles are on the right of way line, but, um, I don't know if.
They are.
Our biggest concern is, you know, what happens to these, to these driveway profiles when you start introducing curb and sidewalk without a big plan for, for the whole, for the whole thing?
Does your building have an elevator in it now?
It does not, but it's been designed for it. So we had to develop the upper floors. This certainly is going to help, uh, enable us to, to do that with, with comfort. But there is sufficient room, uh, internally. Now, depending on the way that, that, the, the building ends up being utilized, there could be a separate operation on the top and the separate operation on the bottom. And, I mean, we'll leave that to the architects to determine what's required and what's not. But we may not even need one, depending on how the balance of the building is utilized. Uh, but it is designed to accommodate an elevator. We just didn't put one in yet.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the planning commission? All right, well, sort of any, uh, questions from the floor, courtesy of the floor?
I will open the chat. If you would like to make a comment on this application, please put your full name and address in the chat box. And I will get the callers right after we finish with the chat box. We have Lee Salt, thirty-seven, thirty-one Manchester Road. Floor is yours. Lee? Can't hear. Lee Salt, you're muted. Okay, I'm going to go on to the next person. We have Brad Osborne, fourteen sixty Coventry Road. Hello, Brad.
Hi Dave, thank you. This was a very good discussion and, and I think very thorough. So whatever the decision is by the, uh, planning commission, I, I think has been, uh, well vented. But really my question is actually if I could post it to Solicitor Zader. Up front, there were a lot of, there was emphasis on the rules for remote participation and etiquette during planning commission meetings. And my question is, who best can I get a copy of these rules from?
Brad, I am not sure of the answer to that question. I'd have to defer to staff on, uh, where that would be found in print. I don't know.
I have it, Dave has it. Take your pick.
Okay, Greg, no, no problem. Can I get them if I email you tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. And again, my question is, and I'm not sure that Solicitor Zader is the best one to ask this to, but, uh, do these same rules apply to the Board of Commissioners meetings?
I know the majority of rules that were read in the beginning are substantially the same, if not identical. I believe in all candor that the, uh, portion of the rules that address the cat function being turned off until this point in the, uh, agenda, uh, that is admittedly a relatively new addition to the protocol.
So I guess to be specific, my question is, what are the rules then for remote participation etiquette during the Board of Commissioner meetings? And how do, how do I get them and how are they communicated to the public?
Brad, I'm not the best person to answer that. I'll defer to staff if they know. Otherwise it'd be a matter of following up with staff, uh, at the township building during regular business hours.
Okay.
And this is Dave. I know that they are verbally conveyed at the beginning of the meetings, um, for B O C. Um, we present them at the beginning of the meeting on screen and then I read them prior to the meeting.
Okay.
So we can check with.
And could I get a written copy of those as well?
I will check, we can check with B O C staff.
I'm, I'm sorry, what does that mean? Check with them?
We'll ask them. If they have them written, written, or if they're just memorized.
Who, who, I'm, I'm sorry, you say B O C staff, who is that?
It would be either Renee or Randy.
Okay, so I can email, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I know Randy reads them, or he might have them memorized by now. So that's probably who I would check with.
Okay, so I can email Randy Cope tomorrow and get those in writing?
You can ask him, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Lee, are you, can you, uh, talk yet?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here, thank you. I, I apologize, I couldn't find my unmute button.
Okay.
Um, I get my question, I, you know, I just want to talk about the sidewalks again. I, I, I agree that there should be sidewalks along Hamilton Boulevard there or two twenty-two. The whole length, not just for the businesses that are there, but you've got people walking from Dorney Park, um, down in front of those businesses, down to the ice cream shop, down to Perkins, and, and that has always been, I've, I've lived in the area for fifty years, fifty-six years, and grew up in that area. And that has always been an issue, um, with people walking in the street, crossing the street in Hamilton Boulevard there. So I would encourage us to, if anything would to do to get sidewalks through that whole area, because it is a pedestrian nightmare, especially in the summer times. That's all that I have, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Seeing no other, uh, names in the chat box, I will open it up to callers. What I will do is I'll just unmute all of the callers. If you'd like to speak and you're a caller, just go ahead and speak up and we will mute the other callers.
Hello?
Would any callers like to speak on this application?
Yes, I would like to.
Okay, we have caller two, please give your full name and address.
Thomas Silvonic. And I own Dorneyville Pharmacy, which is thirty-three thirty Hamilton Boulevard in Allentown.
Thank you.
Can I go ahead?
Yes, yes.
Some of this is for heads up for the planning commission. The attorney for this, uh, business gave me so many problems right from the start, the beginning. And we still are dealing with them with this snow removal. It cost me fifteen hundred dollars because the attorney drew a freehand map using all of our parking spaces on the top lot, which we, she probably told the zoning commission that they had owned them, but they don't. They're owned by my business. And I proved it to her by showing her the survey that I had done when I had my addition put on the second floor by, and by Jerdon. Also, they have a second floor for rent to the business and not even enough parking for the first floor business. We are always having problems with the people parking in our pharmacy spaces, which are clearly marked pharmacy personnel only. Not with the snow, not with the snow. They have plowed and shoveled onto our property, covering four of our top spaces. I even took a video on my phone if anybody would like to see it. I don't trust this company and never should have been allowed to open without enough parking. If allowed to demolish thirty-four oh four Hamilton Boulevard, where is the J T going to be relocated? In the second floor of the marijuana building? Which will mean more parking problems. Thank you for the time you've given me to speak my piece.
Okay.
Let me open it up to the remaining callers for another shot. Would any remaining callers like to comment on this application? Hearing none, I will go back to mute and it's back to the board.
Okay, uh, thank you. We will now move on to the Ridge Farm Major Plan twenty seventeen one oh one. And this is a request for preliminary plan review. Again, Greg will go through the staff presentation.
Okay.
Let me just say thank you to guys. I'm, I'm sorry, we're, you're good with us then? I just want to say thanks, appreciate everybody's input and I think it was a good discussion. We'll look forward to, uh, working this out in the future.
Very good. If you, if you want to, uh, contact staff and set up a small meeting to discuss stuff, we're always available.
I think that's probably our next move. Yep, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
I'm moving on. Ridge Farm, this is an application to develop the properties located at, oh boy, Huckleberry Road, PIN five four eight seven four six four two two one three nine. Huckleberry Road, PIN five four eight seven six seven five four four seven three four. Twenty-five thirty-four Huckleberry Road. Twenty-five eighty-two Huckleberry Road. Eighteen oh two North Cedar Crest Boulevard. Huckleberry Road, PIN five four eight seven two seven three four three one three four. Cedar Crest Boulevard, PIN five four eight seven two six five seven one one four six. Huckleberry Road, PIN five four eight seven two seven three zero three nine eight four. Cedar Crest Boulevard, PIN five four eight seven two six three two three zero six seven six. Nineteen twenty-six Cedar Crest Boulevard and nineteen twenty-eight Cedar Crest Boulevard. The plan proposes a T N D residential cluster development on approximately one hundred and thirty-eight point three four acres, consisting of sixty-eight single dwelling units, eighty-eight age restricted single dwelling units, seventy-four two unit dwelling units, eighty-two age restricted dwelling, two unit dwelling units, and a clubhouse. Three hundred and eight apartment units in eleven twenty-eight unit apartment buildings, five condominium apartment buildings containing a total of sixty apartment units, two three-story and two four-story mixed-use buildings containing twenty-seven thousand two hundred square feet of commercial and restaurant space on the first floor and one hundred total apartments above. Two one-story five thousand square foot commercial restaurant buildings, one thirty thousand square foot medical office building and a community clubhouse. Stormwater management facilities and approximately twenty-four point nine four seven acres of open space and thirteen point two two nine acres of active open space. The plan also proposes on the west side of Cedar Crest Boulevard, sixty-four two unit dwelling units in the R four portion, nine single dwelling units in the R two portion, nine single dwelling units in the R R portion, and eight single dwelling units in the R R two portion. All units proposed are to be served by Public Water and Sewer. K Walbert LLC is the equitable owner and applicant. Little previous history. On January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, the applicant withdrew the two remaining SALDA waiver cre- request that they had submitted. At their October seventh and twenty-first, twenty twenty meetings, the Board of Commissioners ruled on all but two of the applicant's requested SALDA waiver and deferral requests. At the September thirtieth, August twenty-fourth, July sixteenth, and May twenty-first, twenty twenty meetings, the planning commission reviewed and took under advisement Ridge Farm Preliminary Plan twenty seventeen dash one oh one. Uh, the Board of Commissioners on their May twentieth, I'm sorry, at their November twentieth, twenty nineteen meeting, approved conditional use twenty seventeen dash six oh one Ridge Farm, uh, subject to five conditions. Uh, the Community Development Department recommends, well, their technical review is dated February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. I believe that's been updated to a more recent date. I believe February. Oh, sorry. February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. And pertains, uh, provides comment pertaining to zoning plan information, fire safety related comments, street lighting erosion, sanitation control, sewage facilities, planning official map, and comprehensive plan consistency. The department recommends that the planning commission take the plan under advisement to afford the applicant the time necessary to address the reviewing agency's comments. Should the applicant fail to submit revised plans in time to be on the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one Board of Commissioner meeting agenda, a completed waiver from the time limitation to review the plan form shall be submitted to the township. Should the applicant fail to submit the completed form, the Board of Commissioners may likely vote to deny the plan at their March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one meeting. The planning commission's deadline and the Board of Commissioners' deadline to act upon the plan is March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Greg. Turn over to the applicant for their presentation.
Great, thank you. Good evening. Jason Engelhardt with Lang and Engineering. Mr. Preston is here with me as well this evening. I will. My intention tonight is to, is a relatively short presentation. Really, we're here tonight to really update the planning commission. The status of the project. Briefly review the, the most recent plan submission that we had in front of you. And talk about our, our path going forward, what the next steps are we envision. There's a couple of orders of business there. But, but again, I don't, I'm not anticipating or intending to do an extensive review of the plan. I'm not asking necessarily for any action by the planning commission this evening. Just really more of an update, seeing the scale of the project and, and I want to make sure that you're. You're stay, you're involved in the process as we, we continue forward. As we're addressing comments from your.
Jason, excuse me, Jason, would you like to be presenter?
That would be great. Yes, I can bring up the plan that way.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's quite all right. Right, just, just to deal with one housekeeping item. And I know Mr. Preston's office will take care of this, but we will provide the, the extension requirement, the extension that's needed. And that'll come from Mr. Preston's office. So we'll take care of that. So what I've brought up is the latest. Site plan, the color rendering of the, of the Ridge Farm layout. And if, if you recall, I'm sure, I'm sure you do. We spent a good deal of, of twenty twenty. Dealing with the waivers. Both at the planning commission level and at the, at the board level. And as, as Greg and others have mentioned. The, they were all addressed. They were addressed with conditions. We added sidewalk, we added landscaping, we, we added curving. There were, there were a number of changes we made along the way that are reflected in the plans we have today. With the grant of those waivers. What, what they did though is, is really fix the, the plan. So now we're dealing with more technical details. As Greg mentioned, there were two waivers associated with. What there was previously known as Road J, and I'll zoom in on that portion of the project. I've got another exhibit that I'll bring up shortly. As we get into a little more of that detail. But Road J had previously extended across, across the property. And had terminated it into a cul-de-sac. And we needed a waiver for the length of that cul-de-sac. As well as the number of units on it. And there was considerable discussion on that about either providing emergency access between the cul-de-sacs. Potentially connecting the two cul-de-sacs. And where we last left off and what was probably preferred from a planning point of view was a connection, a connection to Valley Forge Road. So. We went back and, and looked after a lot of discussion on this, this, this issue. And looked closely at the plan. And looked at alternatives. And what the plan you have in front of you now is what we came up with for, for an alternative. And that provides code compliant cul-de-sac length. Which. Is Road N. As well as, as fourteen units on that, that cul-de-sac, which is within the, the permissible amount per the ordinance. So what I, I guess like what I can do at this point is jump into. The amendment to the waiver for this location. So. Part of the review comments that I received, and again, we've only received them in the last couple of days. It's a large project. There is, there's a lot of comments to work our way through and we're going to be doing that going forward. But I did have an opportunity to put together this exhibit today. Just to illustrate the differences between. The waiver that was granted initially. For Road I. So Road I is, is. The road we were discussing before, Road N connects off of Road I. But there was a waiver that was granted initially for this area. That involved two hundred-foot radiuses along Road I. And I'm highlighting them in this exhibit. As well as a reduction in the tangent length from what's required as a hundred feet to sixty feet. So. Road I is a private portion of the, of our project. It's going to be a private roadway. The, the speed limit of Road I is, was going to be limited to fifteen miles an hour. And with those two assurances, we were granted a waiver for these geometric changes. And a lot of these, and the geometry here is pretty similar to, to a number of waivers we were granted on the, the east side of the project. So when we went and made the recent modification, we looked to see if we could improve that condition. And we were able to improve the condition by, by increasing the radius. On the, the southern end to a hundred fifty feet, which is what's permitted per ordinance. As well as providing a hundred-foot tangent. So a waiver isn't any longer required for this portion of, of Road I. We still require a waiver for the hundred-foot radius on the northern end of this portion of the roadway. And to accommodate the full change, we reduce the tangent length to seventy-seven feet. So I haven't formally submitted a waiver request. Which I can do documentation wise going forward. I think partially because I, I, because we had previously been granted a waiver here and we were in effect reducing the impact of that. But I understand the reason to document it and to, to amend it and I'll provide some documentation of that. Going forward. Going to go. Is there, are there any questions on that before I move forward on the waiver itself? From the board?
I have a question on the retaining wall there on that road. Looks like it's changed. Is it extended out further on the new submission?
On, on the previous plan, there was a wall on both the south and north side. This plan actually reduces that. It, it, we still require a wall. There's still a lot of grade change through here. But it's only on the east side of the. South side.
And how many feet tall is that wall proposed to be?
Check the grading plan for that. It's, it's reasonably tall though. It matured varies across its height, but, but if I recall, it was over fifteen feet in some locations. And that, that was a concern. In some of the initial comments, when we were proposing that road to be dedicated to the. To the township and it's being maintained as private. It'll be, well, it'll have a fence for, for false detection as well as guide rail around those curves. So if there's no other questions on that, what I'll do is I'll move back to the overall.
Jason, just out of curiosity. How many dwelling units do you give up by these changes?
It's the same number of units as before.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. It's got some more creativity.
Are the. The new homes along Road I, are they at grade or they a slope driveway or? I know you had issues, you know, grade. That's why the retaining wall was there.
Yeah, I mean, everywhere in this portion of the, of the site has the most grade of anywhere on, on the Ridge Farm project. So there is, there is considerable grade change. In most cases, units are either walk-ups or walk-outs depending on the. The circumstance of how they, how they sit against the hill. So either you have a walkout backyard or a walkup. Backyard depending on that condition.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have a question. In terms of the, the guard rail. Is, is there any type of guard rail that might be a little more aesthetically pleasing than the. You know, the, the Penn Dock gray metal guard rail, just because this is a, a private road. Along this radius.
We, we can, well, I've used wood guide rails before, but I'm not very fond of them. They, they don't, they don't.
Yeah, I, I agree.
They are more attractive, but they don't function quite as well and they're. And they're more of a maintenance headache. I, I can certainly do a little research. There's some aluminum guide rails that are a little nicer looking, but I, you know, you're not really getting a, like. An aesthetic that I think you're, that you want.
Yeah.
If I give you some advice, I would look at the National Parks Guide Rails standards. They have some very. Aesthetically pleasing guide rail.
Okay, I will certainly do that. Okay, thank you. So we covered. The two waivers that have been withdrawn. The amendment to the plan in this area. As well as the, the amendment to the waiver in this location. Just, I think a couple of other items of note, just in general. When you do review the plan set and the, the plans are, I think, a hundred and fifty plan sheets at this point. I wouldn't expect the board to look at every engineering detail. That's what your staff's for. Considering their reviews, I know they're looking closely at the plans, which. On a plan set like this, it actually, you wouldn't think so, but I, but I do appreciate that because. It helps us resolve issues before we get to construction. But there are some, some plan sheets in there we, that we've added. We added an open space plan for the west side of the, the project for the non-TND area. That reflects the eight acres of open space we have in that location. That's sheet forty-one. We also added a, a streetscape plan on sheet forty-two in the plan set. That focuses on the streetscape along Walbert. And I certainly can bring those up, but I would just, just. Note to you that to take a look at those as you have time. And to review those as we go forward. And lastly, we, we also added lot consolidation plans, which was a comment from your, your staff and consultants. To consolidate the lots as they exist today. And at some point I'll have to discuss with, with the staff. How we proceed with the lot consolidation, whether it's in conjunction with the full plan or in advance of. So another item I wanted to discuss tonight. Was, you know, before I, I want to go over the, the anticipated path going forward. But I know there was some discussion on, on the, the mobility easement. So maybe before I even get to that, we can discuss briefly the mobility easement so we can get that, that conversation started. So. I know, I know you, you've discussed it up to this point. The original conditional use application did have a, a, a formal connection. From one end of the project to the other. And that was reviewed and it was requested that, that road be made a little bit wider than the other roads. At thirty-two feet width. And that we make that. The public safety had asked that we make that a snow emergency route. So there was, there was that kind of discussion happened in that process. And then when we went through the, the waiver process at that point, that was eliminated because of some concerns over the, the grade across that area. And the end result was. A condition that asked us to basically put an emergency access in. With the ability to convert that emergency access to a, to a road in the future. And the plan essentially, as you see it today, was the way the conditional use was approved. When we, as we were discussing the waivers, the mobility easement had come up again. And I had done a series of exhibits which were reflected in the current plan. So the first one I'm going to bring up, Exhibit A, illustrates effectively what we would be expecting to construct. Based on that condition. And the, the dimensions of the, of the easement have changed some based on, based on comments, but. The reason for the, the forty-foot width. And on the final plan, the twenty-eight foot cartway was intending to meet the, your, your alternate cartway and roadway standards. That are in the south. So. There was discussion of access control in that condition. Of providing a, a rest area. So this would be used by pedestrians initially. And of course, as emergency access. We extended the mobility easement out some to try to catch grade some because this is a very small portion of the site. But this was what we anticipated constructing upfront. The. The inset that's on the plan. Was what we had also discussed previously. Was what would the final connection look like should, and the way it was worded in the, in the. Approval would, should it was ever converted by the township. So the, and, and part of that was, was a trail system. That would connect. You know, again, because this becomes a roadway, now you need to, really need a, a pedestrian connection. And there was a desire to try to. Catch grade here some to flatten out the grade along that trail. So that's how we ended up with the forty-foot wide easement, the twenty-foot, twenty-eight-foot wide cartway. This still, it would end up being at about a ten percent grade. And that's, that's, that's how we ended up with what's on the plans today. So. I, I think it meets the intent of what the condition was. But we're certainly open to, to comments and further discussion about it. We're, we're provided it doesn't, doesn't dramatically alter the remainder of the plan. But I know it was interesting discussing that. Those, those, the planning commission want to discuss that further now.
I'll, I'll provide my input. I, I would prefer that to be a road. I, I noticed there's access control there. So does that mean that's. If it's a mobility easement, it's basically going to be barricaded?
The, the condition it within that, within the approval required the access control. Us, for us to install the access control as part of the emergency access. Because again, it was required to only be emergency access in the, with the ability to convert it, but only, only upfront.
Yeah, and I, I guess that's up to the attorneys to figure that out, but just my, my preference is. A road because. You know, I am, I am concerned about traffic congestion and. You know, if we do provide act a road between the residential subdivision and this mixed use, which has commercial uses. That will help alleviate traffic going out around in, in the township. It's a direct. Path. So me personally, I, I'm in favor of. Providing a road that connects these. The mixed use and the residential subdivision because. It does alleviate traffic out onto the surrounding streets, which I, I know there's a lot of concerns about.
I, I agree with that, David. I, I think that should be a. Full, a roadway also.
Yeah, I, I would add, if you're going to build it, as, as you noted somewhere in your correspondence, there's only about a four-foot difference. Between what you've recently proposed and what the township alternate standards are. And I'd say, let's build it, you know, let's build it as a road and let's meet the alternate standards so we at least have something more fully usable.
If I can weigh in a little. Certainly, I, I would be amenable to the lesser standard so long as it was no parking on both sides.
Agreed, agreed.
Yeah, that was going to be my thought and. I voted against the grade. And it wasn't based on motorized vehicles. It was based on. Age fifty-five and over individuals going on a sidewalk that was a grade matching the road. I applaud the applicant for this switchback type of sidewalk trail. To enable that to occur. That could be a really. To enable that to occur, that could be a really nice meander. Trail with trees and, you know, landscaping, that could be really gorgeous if it's done right. The reason why I voted against it originally was because the sidewalk was to match the grade of the road, so. If this is the proposal, I would be in favor of that because I'm all about connectivity. I was for connectivity over the Valley Forge Road and this connectivity of two major things that. If somebody wanted to go from one of those houses at the top down to the medical office building. They're going to have to either meander or walk or travel under Cedar Crest or Walbert, so. That's my. My thoughts, thank you.
Plus it would, it would keep some traffic off of Huckleberry. Just another question out of curiosity, it looks like you've changed the length of the road a little bit from the earlier proposals. What impact has that had on the grade of the roadway?
It does help with the, with the grade of the roadway, but it's, you know, at the end of the day. The only way to accomplish the connection here is to have a, a roadway of that nine and a half, ten percent grade. But that's, that's the reason why for the geometry the way it is. I think the geometry is fine, but it does, you could try to lengthen it.
So does it, does it reduce the overall grade slightly?
I, I think this plan is still ten percent.
Okay.
And is this road going to be proposed to be a private road or a township road?
Everything on the, on the TND portion of the project is private. So nothing is getting, getting dedicated. And again, at, at this point, it's still only, I understand the, the board's. The board's desire, at this point, it still proposes emergency access, but this is a future roadway. But, but yeah, if, if it were to become a, a road, it would be a private.
And to meet the alternate road standards in the Saldau, what percentage of grade would it need to be, Greg?
I believe seven is what the local. Am I correct there?
Yeah, that's correct. It would be seven percent.
Seven percent.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't know where we're going to go on this. We have planning commission people have spoken. Diane, you haven't said. Exactly, but the, the other four have said that we prefer to be a roadway. Do you want to say or?
Well, I'm certainly concerned with the grade. As a private road, who's going to maintain this in, during it? For example, it's been a very active winter. Who's going to maintain during an ice storm? Is this going to be a private contractor?
Yeah. Yes. And there's a, there's a homeowners association for the entire project. All the roads on site will be maintained by that. The contractor for the association.
And, and this is being driven to connect the two sections, not necessarily as an emergency contact for, for emergency services, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, well, well, again, there's, there's two exhibits here and the plan today illustrates it as twenty-foot wide. With barriers on either end for emergency access. This inset was intended to show you how it could be converted to a roadway to meet the condition. So.
Well, certainly the, the grade is, is a concern as it was when this waiver initially came before the board. So I still, I would like to see this designed to meet our standards for safety reasons. I can appreciate the need to provide some internal circulation, but certainly, safety would be. The most important thing I'd be looking at.
And, and that's. And there, there are roads like this elsewhere in the township. On, you know, this is a, what, what concerns are you specific, specific safety?
Is there any other development that has this mesh density that's got that type of a road connecting it?
The most recent one would be. The Regency Hills at Winchester. The density there on the, the. Over fifty-five side is over five point five units per acre. And I believe they did get waivers for the roads going up the. Up the slope to exceed the local road standards for grade.
Yeah, I, I, I live in a relatively dense. Development, this is at Green Hills and, and we have some, we have private roads that are owned and maintained by the HOA. And I, I guess just some. I guess advice for the, the applicant is to make sure the, there's a strong HOA regulations set up. With the development. I, I know in our development, our, our private roads are actually plowed. Before the, the public roads are, because we have public and private roads in our development. In our HOA, we're actually fully funded to repair the roads if necessary. We've actually recoded all our private roads recently. And they're, they're in better condition than the public roads and our public roads are in great condition still too though. But. The key item would be to set up a, a strong HOA with strong rules and regulations.
If I can speak up a little bit, I'd, as a current resident of the Regency at South Whitehall Project. Our snow plowing contractor really did a phenomenal job in the twenty-seven to thirty-inch snowstorm. Roads were cleared and our, our driveways were cleared relatively early in the game and very nicely cleared, I would add. And so maybe, maybe the key is to find yourself a good contractor. Cost aside. And yes, we do have relatively steep graves coming off of Hampton Road going up the hill. But, you know, for somebody like myself, it's good exercise to walk up them. See how, see how well your body performs. And keep it that way. So I'm not, I'm just not convinced that, as I've said in earlier meetings, I'm not really convinced that. Quote, ten percent, unquote, is that much of a problem? Yes, it requires some care, but no more than walking down a seven percent hill in my mind. Thank you.
Thanks. Make a motion to make it a, a. A full road, is that the way to proceed? Or a way to proceed?
Would put the planning commission on record.
I, I'll make the motion then to make, make this a, a. A, a full service road as, as, as indicated.
Is this something that we would want to have looked at by our engineer for comment before we go ahead and do that?
Tony?
I mean, we could look at it, I think most of the comments, if I'm not mistaken, were generated by public safety in terms of the. Steepness of the road, but we'll, you know, we could definitely look at. I think we'll work with them in terms of getting emergency vehicles up and down. Make sure they can make all the turning movements, things like that. We'll have to look if it's a, if it is a road. If there's any setback issues. I believe you're okay at the upper end with those houses, but we'll look, we'll. We'll give it a full review.
Okay.
They earlier, previously concluded. Or does it represent an improvement from the conditions?
Well, it's, it's not exactly what had been proposed before. Obviously, the plan has changed since then, so some of the geometries can't be made. The road will be narrower. But of course, recall that at conditional use, this road was to be the main collector road through the development. So it was intended, as, as we said, for a snow emergency route and it was to be the widest of the roads going through. At this point, we're looking at reducing it down to a more alternative local road standard. So this would not be part of a collector road through the development, but rather a local road simply connecting the top and bottom. If that helps.
I would certainly think that's something that we want the Public Safety Commission to weigh in on. Would you not agree with that?
To Diane, to second, to second. The comment we made, there would be a requirement for some waivers, I guess. I don't know if we will wait to do an official waiver letter or a request, I should say, from the applicant. But those radii wouldn't meet a local standard, so I think. There would be a set of waivers that would be, that would go along with. This road if it turns into a public road.
Considering we have writing for, from the applicant and haven't even considered it tonight. And neither have any of our reviewing agencies, would make sense that we would get. That information from the developer and have it moved through as the rest of the plan has gone through. And back with our engineer and with the Public Safety Committee.
Would then have for this road to be, remain private or public? Or would it become public?
If emergency vehicles are using it, whether it's private or public, really, it would still have to meet the same standard.
Right, and emergency, emergency vehicles can, can navigate this. I think we did run the turning templates, but I can certainly provide those.
All right, what's? Do we want to ma, have it for the next time or do we want to do it now? What's?
I, I think, I think we should do it the next time. One, we also need to get public comment on it. I think it gives public safety another shot at it, even seeing it multiple times, just to get their blessing. Because they're the ones that are going to be driving our million dollars fire trucks on this road. Even for false alarms, because this is how they're going to access it from Greenawalt. Because that's going to be the quickest shot to get, you know. So I, I would like to see it go to least public safety, get their blessing. And then I would also encourage it to be no parking along the whole length of there, so.
Okay. Go ahead, Alan.
No, I ju, I just agree with Brian on that point.
Okay.
The public service take a, public safety take a look at it and I agree. I think it would be best no parking on both sides and you've, then you've got room to maneuver.
Yeah, that sounds, sounds good to me.
All right. So.
But I like the idea and the, and the concept. I would just like, you know, keep everybody in the loop, so. Thanks.
Okay. Jason, does that make sense? You, you may need a plan then, the revised plan?
Yes, it, no, it does. And I, and I honestly, I have to speak with the developer as well, just because the. Condition associated with conditional use, as for the emergency access, so that's what he was required to provide. So I just, I'm not, I'm not necessarily saying that there'll be any concern there. I just need to confirm that, that he's on board. With providing a formal road here.
Okay, so that's what we want to do then is, is, you know, get the, the road as, as described, the design. And then we'll put that by the public safety and then we'll decide after we see that. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Okay.
So if we're okay here, then the, the only thing else I wanted to really do was outline. Where I see the path forward. Bring it back up the overall plan. So again, we're in receipt, receipt of, this has been the, this is the second formal submission of this plan. And obviously, there was a lot of edits along the way, but this is the second time we've, we've updated the, the full, really the first revision. Full set of plans. My next step is I'm going to schedule some meetings with, meetings with staff to review some of their comments, or professionals. On, on a, outside of a public meeting basis to just to get into those details. We're going to coordinate further with Parkland School District, although they provided information in the past on school bus stops, that type of stuff. I want to reconfirm with the latest plan that they're, they're comfortable with those locations. We've also been talking to Lanta about the bus stop location and coordinating that back and forth with Penn Dot as well. There's, we do have in the pad in your packet, there's a letter from Lanta. That basically says that they're, they're are okay with our location as proposed. Although they're, they want us to look closer at, at providing a, a, a better condition for their buses to get in and out. So we're looking closely at that and, and again, Penn Dot Lanta have two different approaches to that bus stop location. And how to, we're trying to resolve that now.
That's also going to be a better condition for the motors behind that bus to get that off the road cartway a little bit. Right now, the buses, when they stop on Walbert can cause conflicts, so.
Yeah, and, and that wasn't, Lanta really wanted it closer to the intersection and Penn Dot really was, was opposed to moving.
Right. But my, my concern is getting it off the cartway as much as possible, like a bus pull-off. They're, they're, they built to, the reconstruction of four twelve near the I seventy-eight exit. Has good examples where they want to put a wall off of the bus pull-offs that, you know, it's not. Causing an unsafe condition with motors still traveling on that road, so.
Yeah, and I, I think that's, you're right. I think that is what we have to incorporate into the plan next to get a, a safe condition off the road.
I would recommend coordinating with the post office too about. If, if they'll require cluster mailbox boxes and then appropriate locations for that. If you haven't already.
Actually, it's, that was the next thing on my list. You're a step ahead of me. But yeah, we, we did have an initial conversation with, with them. We haven't placed community mailboxes yet. Because we, we still in discussions there, but we will, I'll be working that into the plan as well. We also, we're going to coordinate with Greg further with public safety as we just discussed and Parks and Rec. I would expect in, in March or early April, we will, we will file an NPDs permit application. We have now filed one to date. We wanted to really receive these comments. We have now to do that. But now that we have those, we're going to work towards that application. Well. We are working with the, with DPW folks and. Really, in particular, as it relates to water improvements and a booster pump that's going to service the upper half of this development. It's, it's the early phase, phases of the project don't require that booster pump, but. But it'll be necessary as we proceed with the project and we've been in design and review with that. In the plan, really still in the planning stages, but we're, we're moving. Our traffic engineer is not on tonight, but I can just update briefly on the, the HOP submissions. So the original plans went in, in August of last year. Penn Dot's reviewed those plans now twice and sometime in March, we'll be submitting the HOP plans for a third time. So the, the road improvements and extent of those are moving along fairly well. And, uh, maybe the next meeting, Rob can provide an update further on that. And, and the last thing I wanted to discuss, uh, was, I, either in conjunction with, with my next preliminary plan submission, or even outside of that, I'm going to be filing plans for the initial phase of the project for final plan. Um, really to create a separate set to pull that, that out of the, the plan set. Um, and really the, the extent of that is the, the medical office building, um, the streetscape improvements along Walbert, the two access ways, the main, the main access and the right and right out. Um, the internal driveway to get you to the medical office building and the parking lot, uh, as well as the gateway to the project and a portion of the, of the, uh, I want to call it walkway, but the, the trail that runs along Cedar Crest. So that, that's covered further in the, in the plans, uh, but I really just wanted to, to, uh, give the planning commission a heads up that that's probably one of the next things you'll be seeing. And again, the only real development that's associated with that will be the medical office building. And, but it'll get us our entrances into the project. It'll develop the rain gardens, the bus stop, the connections here. Uh, all the, the fringe improvements, uh, as well as the, the gateway. So I think it'll be a nice, um, opening to the project and it's also the, our highest priority to get, get started. So we'll be working towards that.
Okay. Anything else, Jason?
I think that's all I had for tonight.
Any, any other questions from the planning commission?
Yes, um, just on your sheet thirty-seven, the phasing, I know this, it's always subject to change and there's a lot of variables. Um, but you know, there's, I understand phase one A, the hus, the medical office building is first, but do you have rough timeframe, frames for, um, you know, one B, one C, uh, two A, and two B and two C? And I, I understand that it's subject to change. And it's, there's a lot of outside agencies that it's dependent on, but.
Yeah, I, I mean, the project in general is, is, uh, is going to be a, a ten-year build out. Um, I, I, I haven't put dates to any of the, the timeframes and all. Again, that's also something to change how the economy proceeds and, and marketing and all those things that go into a project, but, uh, yeah, and I, I would say it's a minimum ten-year build out for a project to this scale. So, I, I wish I could give you more detail than that, but I don't think I can.
Thank you.
Okay. Right, um, we'll open this to, uh, public comment. Dave, you want to?
Yep, I'm getting there.
Okay.
Okay, the public comment portion is now open for this application. If you would like to make a comment, please type your name and your address into the chat box and we will call on you as the names appear.
It's three minutes, right?
Yes.
I got my stopwatch.
Okay.
We have Chris Peschel. Could you please give your, give your address? And you have the floor.
Hello, Chris?
I just wanted to know what was the plan. Yeah, just wanted to know what the plan was for Huckleberry and Cedar Crest? The intersection?
Chris, can you, your, can you give your address, please?
It's there.
Oh, fifteen forty-four North Main Street.
Thank you.
Uh, Huckleberry and, and Cedar Class Crest will be signalized, uh, and, and it's also going to be reprofiled. It'll have the better visibility over that, uh, over the hump that's there today. And again, a signal.
I see it.
Do you know how low, how low they're going to have to make the intersection?
I, I, I don't, I can't give you a dimension tonight. The, the traffic engineer is preparing those plans, but, but there was, it, it was more than a couple feet, uh, that it was being lowered to that intersection.
Okay, thank you, Chris. I, I see your address on the chat now. I apologize. Um, next we have Sean Hubler, eleven fifteen North thirtieth.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello? Hi, I, I'm just really worried about the incredible density of this project. I, I, I just, I, it just doesn't even fit in with South Whitehall. This is like too much urbanization, too much impact, traffic. It, it's overwhelming and I can see it from my, from my living room window. I'm looking out, you're talking about, you know, you're not sure how many feet. They were talking about taking twenty feet off of the top of Huckleberry Hill. And twenty feet, where are you going to go with all that filter? And, and the subs- subsidence, the, the changing of the geology and, and piping away of the water, dropping the water table. This radiates out from this site for several miles. We have effects that, that are radiating out from the Regency project and causing issues. And now you have something with the incredible density on a steep hill and on a flood plain. Because you know it's the hill and then it's the big wide field and, and I just really, i- i- it's just too ambitious of a project for this area. It, it, it just is. It's, it's out to lunch. With, with, with traffic and, and considerations and safety considerations and I just, I, I just can't get excited about this project at all. I don't think it fits in with our neighborhood. I just don't. I don't wish to be urbanized. They didn't ask for this. And it just feels like it's going to be full speed ahead no matter what. In, in the middle of, of, you know, it's like rack them and stack them and pack them like sardines in the middle of COVID nineteen. Where's your social distancing? Where's a whole lot of other considerations? Where's your open space? Where's, what makes this township livable? We do not have to be building this. You are not obligated to K builders. What sort of legacy are you going to leave for our kids that are in high school now, that would maybe like to raise their children in South Whitehall? And all they have is, you, you know, it's all this urbanization. It's nothing like it even is now, let alone like it, what it was even just a few years ago. Your, your whole ten-year plan, everything, it's too much density, too much impact. And, and I, I just think you need to really reconsider here a lot.
Thirty seconds.
Now, I'm done. I give you the floor.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Brad Osborne, fourteen sixty Coventry Road.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, thank you, Chairman McNair. My first question is relayed for the engineer, Jason Engelhardt. And, um, this may have been discussed and I missed the point, but because I may have missed it, my question is, what is the purpose and the need for the, a guide rail extension off of Road I in this development?
The, the purpose and a need for the, for the, I mean, guide rails used anywhere where you're, you have a, a grade change off of a, a roadway in particular around a, a, any kind of curvature. So, so, you know, they will be providing guide rail, and we are already providing guide rail where we believe it's necessary. Based on the roadway geometry and the associated grade.
Did anything change that required the, the need for the extension? Or was it just regengineering?
Yeah, I mean, the plan was modified in that area, but we always had a guide rail, um, around those curves previously. So there, there really isn't an extension. There was some discussion about using an alternate form of guide rail. But, uh, but we, we always were proposing guide rail around those curves.
I understand. Um, wh- what is the extension? What, what is, what is the need for that, though? I, I'm not picking up on that.
Brett, Brett, are, are you talking about the wall that continues to the east? Almost to Cedar Crest?
Yes. Uh, well, no, actually past Cedar Crest on Road I.
Yeah, the, the, the geometry on Road I has, has modi- modified. That's one of the things I reviewed previously. Uh, a- again, they, the, the scope of the guide rail really hasn't changed at all. The, the, uh, there was always a need and there continues to be a need for guide rail because of the geometry and the grade.
Ja- Jason, I, I think he's talking about the wall that goes from Cedar Crest over to Road I.
Yes.
Yeah, there, there wouldn't be guy, there wouldn't be guide rail along that wall. I mean, it's, it's, it's at its highest point near the, as you get closer to the roadway. Uh, it gets lower as you go along. There'll be a fence along this section of, of wall um, that the, between this, the, the backyards of these properties and this, just for fall protection. Because it's required for building code and it's smart thing to do.
Well, thank you. I, I guess that was the, the, the crux of my question is, who is it protecting from what?
The, the wall is there to, to make up the great change in grade. The fence is there for fall protection. So if you're in, if you're in your backyard here, uh, you would put a fence up on this, this wall to protect anyone from falling off on the, on the other side.
Okay.
Thirty seconds.
All right, thank you. My second question is this, um, again, going back to the rules of remote participation inadequate uh, during planning commission meetings, allow or require public comment before making a decision. In this case, it appears as though the planning commission made a decision about the road width and, and grade without, uh, taking public comment. Is that within the guidelines?
I don't think we made any official emo- motion. We had the discussion, but we didn't make any official motion.
I understand no, uh, formal emotion, motion was made, but was there a decision made? Before public comment?
I don't think so.
I gave, I gave my opinion and my opinion was that there, one should be public comment, two, that there should be a discussion with the Public Safety Commission. So basically we set the table for another discussion, uh, in a future meeting of that. You know, public safety could come back and like, no, we don't want that. I mean, we would take that. They personally hold a lot of weight with me because they're the ones getting up in the middle of the night to go to an accident at that location. So until I hear back from them, I wasn't going to vote either way uh, until I had more background or more input from our other, uh, agencies. So we, I, we all gave our thoughts and where we were headed, but we didn't make an official motion or vote on that. And, uh, if you go back into the, the dialogue of the meeting, I said, one thing we need to do is get public comment and hopefully we get some tonight and then I'm sure we'll get some in a future meeting as well.
Yeah, I understand that Commissioner Height and, and I appreciate that, uh, and respect that. I guess my question is, should this be formalized in the form of a motion before a decision is made and votes taken? Because it appears as though a decision has been made.
Um, I, we, we discussed our, um, opinions and, and that's the, the purpose of this is to provide our opinions and also everyone in the audience, uh, to provide their opinions. And, um, as Commissioner Height said, um, we're going to take more public input, um, from public safety and, um, the audience and when the, the time is appropriate, we will, uh, make a formal motion and vote on that motion, um. But that, that's not tonight.
Chairman McNair, do you agree with that?
Yes, I do. Do you have any comments that you, you would like to, um, give us on, on the road now?
No, actually, I'm, I'm looking at the fact, it appears as though a decision has been made without a vote taken. And that's the crux of my question.
Would it be appropriate to ask Mr. Zeta to weigh in for meeting etiquette for us as far as whether a motion is necessary? Because the developer did talk about a, you know, potential waiver and we were talking about the construction of that road to become something that could be made into a road. I don't know, Mr. Zeta, could you give us your opinion?
Sure, I'd be glad to. Commissioner Kelly, first of all, the comments made by Mr. Height, Mr. McNair, Mr. Wilson, I agree with what they've said. When I sat here listening to the activity, the comments of the planning commission members who spoke up, I viewed it as those individual PC members giving their view, their opinions. Uh, no decision was made this evening because, uh, you, you, you don't make a decision and then send it to the Public Safety Commission or any other organization within the township to review. You look for the input for those agencies such as the Public Safety Commission. Furthermore, I heard Mr. Engelhardt say that he'll have to check with his client, the developer about this. As I said earlier in the meeting, uh, during the agenda review, uh, I don't have the conditional use decision with me. I haven't read it in months. And I know a few people chimed in as to what they recalled saying, but ultimately the obligation of developers to fulfill the requirements that are in the conditional use decision. And if the recommendation of the planning commission ultimately goes beyond that, that will require some measure of cooperation with, by the developer. And none of those issues have been wrestled to the ground this evening. So I certainly did not view tonight's activity as constituting a decision.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Cindy Smith, twenty-four forty-two Huckleberry Road. The floor is yours.
Hi, thank you. First of all, yes, I'm sorry. Um, I just want to thank you all for the time and the devotion you put into this because I'm sure it's not an easy job. And as, as another township, I appreciate it. Um, my question is, will there be a connecting road between Huckleberry and Walbert?
That's what we just said, we're, we're looking into.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that something you would prefer or something you would not prefer?
Well, I prefer it because we live on Huckleberry Road and there's not entrances except at Daw Street to cut over to Walbert. And so if we don't have another thorough way to get through to Walbert, all the traffic is going to come down right before Cratchers and into that area to cut over to Walbert. And I just hope that there's a way that we can connect to major roadways through the development.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Monica Hodges, seventeen oh seven Penn's Crossing. The floor is yours.
Hi, thank you so much. Um, I just wanted to make a quick comment. Um, as a resident who lives in the hills of Winchester, which is a nine percent grade, I really thank the committee for deferring. I really thank the committee for deferring to public safety and waiting on this decision. Not that I disagree with the connector road, but I feel it needs to be done in a more safe way. Just because it's done somewhere else, it doesn't make it the best option in terms of safety. I would not want to make this a, a standard grade. And I just truly wish that we upheld our Saldo more. That's why we have it. I wish it was upheld. Thanks. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Lee Salt, 3731 Manchester Road. Lee, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thanks, David. Appreciate it. First of all, I'd like to thank, well, just, it's nice to see the developer met the cul-de-sac on, on the west side of the property to do that. I appreciate that. As a resident, I appreciate you making, making that effort and doing that. Just from watching all these, uh, all the meetings we've gone through. I, I would be in favor of having the connective road going from the lower part to the upper part. I think it, it ties the properties together. I think it should be a full-service road that, that we could, that the residents of the upper and lower could get back and forth and it would, as I think Mr. Wilson said, it would alleviate a lot of traffic on Huckleberry, Cedar Crest and Walbert. And, uh, you know, it would be nice to have it a full-service road going back and forth. I think that would be a, a good thing to do. So, uh, I guess the grade's an issue, but I think there's other, there's other places, as mentioned, in the township that have grades that are unfortunately higher than what the standard is. So, but thank you very much for your time.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more names in the chat, so I will open it to callers. I have caller five. If you'd like to make a comment, please speak up. Any callers would like to speak?
Can you hear me?
Yes, please give your name and your address.
Dave Tomasic, 1636 North 28th Street. Just one quick question. Are there any updated drawings of this project we can pick up at the municipal building? Or at, where, at the office you're at now? Because I'm trying to do this over a phone and I don't, you know, I can't see nothing.
Uh, Mr. Tomasic?
Yes.
I believe I do have a plan set there. Um, if you want to take a look at it, I, I don't know if I can release it to you, but certainly we can kind of meet in the lobby or some outside area and take a look at it. You can set up an appointment.
All I really have is that, that concept plan drawn from about two years ago. That's what I'm trying to look at and see what, you know, what you're all talking about. I just, you know, I just wanted, you know, if there was something we could pick up and, and, you know, bring home when, when you're talking, I know what you're talking about. I don't have a computer, so I'm, I'm on the phone.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, because my other suggestion would be visit the website, but obviously you can't do that, so.
Right.
So yeah, I would suggest, give, give me a call and we'll set up an appointment and you can come in and take a look at stuff.
Alrighty, thank you.
Sure thing.
Okay, there were no other callers and the chat appears clear.
Okay. Any other comments from the planning commission or, or a motion to take it under advisement?
I'll make that motion contingent on that time extension.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Brian Height?
Aye.
Dan Kelly?
Aye.
Bill McNair?
Aye.
Alan Tope?
Aye.
David Wilson?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Jim. All right. On to Agenda Item Five, Transportation Infrastructure Update. Tony?
Sorry, no, like I said, uh, last Thursday, no real update right now. Penn Dots kind of just making it through the winter. We'll see on top of it. I did see something come across my desk. I talked to Greg about, about some type of, uh, yeah, meeting in the Conservation District for 309, so that might be a, it might be the interchange. So I'm going to talk to Greg about that, but that's the only thing that's really, uh, out there right now.
Okay. All right, thank you. Moving along, Item Six is the Comprehensive Plan Update. David?
Yeah, and again, not much to update compared to Thursday. Just stay tuned for the upcoming meetings. It's the opportunity for the public to kind of put forth the recommendations on what's going to be in the new comp plan. So, tell your friends to, once the date comes out, tell your friends, get as many people as we can involved. Yeah, and again, it's finalizing the, that meeting and lining up experts is kind of where we're, where we are right now.
Okay. All right, and you'll be announcing it over the, on the webpage or how, how should we expect to see?
I hope to announce it everywhere I can. So yes, it'll be website, blog, email lists.
Like meetings.
At the public meetings. Try and get in touch with Parkland Press. Okay, so yes, we're going to try and advertise it as best we, well, yeah, advertise it as best we can, for sure.
Okay. Moving on, Agenda Item Seven, Courtesy of the Floor. Anyone else? Have any comments on, on other, other subjects?
Yes, so the chat is open. And I don't see any requests for additional comment. I opened it up to callers.
Okay. Bye. Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.